Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
All right, let's call this meeting to order Liberty County Commissioners Court Regular Meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Gentlemen, don't forget tomorrow is Valentine's Day. I want to see you. I want to be sure and see y'all all again in two weeks, okay? So, uh, take, take care of your business. But, uh, um, sorry, I'm not in court this morning, but I'm, um, well, about eleven hundred and fifty miles away in this little spot they call Washington, D.C. And it, uh, I was gonna get a little bit more dramatic with this, uh, court this morning and go up on, uh, by the Capitol and livestream from up there, but it's snowing, so I'm not gonna do that. But, uh, we're just gonna stay right here at the hotel and take care of business. Uh, but I'm at the, uh, National Association of Regional Councils, uh, uh, conference, uh, with H P A C and had some interesting meetings, uh, with, uh, regional congressmen. And, uh, it's, it's been very, not just educational, but, uh, enterprising for all. So, anyway, we'll get on with our business this morning. Uh, pledge the U.S. flag and Texas flag, Lee, or you're there? There you are. Yeah. Can you put, yeah, can you please do those for us?
Uh, please stand, face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God,
God.
and so, the Constitution of America. Please face the Texas flag. Honorable.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas. I am God. On this.
Indivisible. Alrighty, and, uh, if y'all would please pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the, the many blessings you give us each and every day. Lord, the, just as the building that, uh, I can see, well, just two blocks from where I am, our nation's capital, I pray for the folks that are there. I pray for their wisdom to be want, to be, to be good for all. And I pray for your guidance, not just for them, but for us in Liberty County, at our magnificent courthouse. Lord, please watch over each and every one of these people that serve here. Lord, please grant them wisdom, guidance, your grace, your mercy, and your blessings, as well as for them, as well as for our, our folks back home that serve. Lord, please be with our men and women in uniform, especially now with the, uh, our, our first responders, our police officers, our constables. Lord, watch over them. Our fire departments. They have a duty that, uh, only they can do. And they do it well. And Lord, I pray for their, for their protection. Lord, please be with us. We go through the rest of this week. Please watch over us. And again, Lord, uh, grant us your, your wisdom today. Forgive us where we failed you. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Notices and proclamations, uh, I don't think we have any this morning, DeeDee. I didn't get any on my notations. Okay, uh, public comment, we'll move on to that. Jeremy Wright, I believe is with Smith Towing. Jeremy, if you're there, would you please walk up front where we can see you and, uh, we can hear you, please?
Where's the stand? Come in. All right. Uh, just wanted to come in and reintroduce ourselves. Smith Towing, I'm Jeremy Wright, Allen Perry's Towing. Uh, General Manager, Smith Towing, Interstate and Southern Boys. I just wanted to come in and talk today about the investment we made in the, in the county, what we, what we provided and how serious we are about that. Uh, two years ago, my uncle bought Smith Towing and Companies for four million. Within the, that year, we spent another seven hundred thousand in property in Liberty, Texas, and Cleveland, Texas, uh, making new locations to service better, you know, for the county and, and rent surrounding cities. That being said, that, uh, investment has been great. The county, you know, it's a tough time, tough deal to walk into a county not knowing anyone. We're from Montgomery County. It's, it was pretty, pretty frightening what we were dealing with, with the amount of investment we made. But after meeting people, it, it really got easier because they're like we are. Really nice people that like keep things right, keep it where it's at, you know, and it's my fault for not getting out and meeting people earlier because we had a lot to rebuild and we have. The rotation that we have, I, I know Bob is here. I don't want to embarrass him, Bob, but it's been great. The Montgomery County, where we do our rotations at as well, is chaotic. It's, it's, it's never ran right. If we have one problem, we could call any of the officers, the sheriffs. Within thirty to forty-five minutes, somebody's gonna call. If you email them anything, they respond. It's one of the best feelings as an, as an owner to have that somebody's gonna, one, do what they say they're gonna do, but have your back and do the right thing. And, you know, that kind of investment is a scary thing. So I'm always like, is this gonna be a brother-in-law town? Or are they gonna, you know, what's gonna happen here? But it has been professional and serious. They're very serious about this. And Bobby, thank you for that, because it's a, like I said, a scary thing when you got that kind of money. That's, that's really it. You know, we also provide hazmat service. We have about fifty thousand dollars in hazmat equipment on our location at any time. So, anytime, anybody in the county ever needs any kind of response, we have the equipment. Uh, like I said, we've got over eleven million dollars in equipment at four Smith Towing Companies. The best equipment, the biggest equipment, and it's, it's tough to keep that and make, and, and keep there all these things we have. That's why I wanted to kind of re-introduce ourselves, because I think a lot of people don't know we have that. And it's important. If something happens, we want to be the guys you call. We're serious about it, very serious about it. And it's a long run, not a short run for us. We're gonna be here for a long time, and it's a family, it's a family. My uncle owns Smith, Cole owns Interstate, I own Perry's, and our cousin owns Southern Boys. So we are a family that loves each other very much. There is never gonna be any turmoil or goofiness going on. We're a very, very tight family. And I want to tell this community, the members here, commissioners, thank you for everything, and if you ever need us, we're here. All right, and thank you all.
Mighty fine. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate you stepping up and introducing yourself this morning. Okay. Moving on from, uh, public comment, declare conflicts of interest. Are there any items on the agenda that would be of a conflict of interest to any persons?
Yes, sir. Um, we have Commissioner, uh, David Whitmire, uh, Precinct Three is going to declare conflict of interest and abstain from eight point one-two, or eight point twelve, sorry.
Well, okay. Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. Moving right along, let's look at the, uh, consent agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity to study over it? And if so, uh, are there any additions? Uh, Dwayne or, or, uh, Ms. Harris, anybody have any additions today?
I don't have any. Thank you, Judge.
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Bruce. Second from Leon. I believe that was what I heard, uh, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Uh, likewise nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along to, uh, regular agenda, eight point one, uh, from Mr., uh, Mr. Hugh Mueller, our Fire Marshal, uh, consider and approve order authorizing Texas Independence Day fireworks sales. Uh, Bill, are you there this morning?
Yes, sir.
Come on up front and give us the dates, if you would, please.
Thanks. Date can be a big part of the day. Morning, Judge. Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yeah, every year, Texas Independence Day, we, we need to vote on whether we're gonna allow ourselves fireworks, uh, for that kick or what we, uh, so.
Which, which days?
Uh, DeeDee will have to show you the dates. I don't have them in front of me.
The twenty-fifth, three months. February twenty-fifth, three March second.
Yeah, that's it.
This is excluding sticks and fence.
Ex, yeah, definitely excluding sticks and fence.
Most would approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Leon, looks like a second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Uh, number eight point two, uh, I'm gonna ask that we take no action on this particular item. Uh, the agenda posting, uh, needs to be corrected, so it will be on the, uh, next, uh, agenda in a couple of weeks from now. So, uh, if someone would make that motion, take no action, and second.
Make a motion, take no action. Second.
All right, Bruce, and then, uh, David, all right. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, uh, Constable Hartness, uh, Precinct Six, consider and approve the request from Liberty County, Constable Precinct Two, to transfer K nine Goyo, uh, K nine dockets, K nine crate from two thousand and eighteen Tahoe. It's laid by ten kettle and, uh, five odor training aides, Liberty County Constable, Precinct Six, effective immediately. That's pretty explanatory. Uh, is there anyone there with the, uh?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Paul Walker with Precinct Six. Uh, excuse me if I'm a little nervous. I don't usually talk to a room full of so many important people. Um, so just a little bit, I want to tell you about the county and what we stand with canines. Uh, a little bit about myself. Um, I provided eleven years of service to Liberty County through Liberty PD and here. Uh, on that, I was on patrol, did a lot of narcotic work, did a lot of DWI enforcement. Um, I've made hundreds of arrests, over a hundred of those for narcotic related. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three alone, I assisted on ten narcotic search warrants for Precinct Four and various other agencies. Um, the need for the canines within the county, Cleveland I S D right now, has a tremendous drug problem within their school district. They have twelve campuses and one dog. Throughout the, kind of the county, we have over twenty-three school campuses that don't have a dog. Only one school I S D actually has a dog within the county. On top of that, there are three canines that are actually active in this county right now. There were four once retiring this month. And they're all assigned to the Drug Interdiction Team, which is not a bad thing, but you never know what their pets are from time to time, and they usually are together. Within the last two weeks, I called for a canine three times, and it, there was nobody there. The closest canine other than that will be the schools, which they implement, um, prescription medication on their dog and guns. So therefore, if we run them on the street, we can't use them to get into cars because there's no, we can't use those proper cause because guns are lethal. Goyo is, um, he's an operative with five narcotic protection odors, and they're all illegal. So with that being said, um, we plan on, one, assisting the whole county. Anybody that asks, any campus that asks, will go and actually screen their campuses. The jail has actually reached out to us to see if we would also assist. I said, if it's, if it's granted, we will also do that. So our goal is to work hand-in-hand with Cleveland I S D, aiding their dog and also their war on their drugs. Um, so with that saying, what's it gonna cost to you guys? Nothing. This dog is, uh, a hundred percent transferred over to us. The only thing that, uh, the cost will be would be food and vet, and that would be the same as the precinct who had their deal. All the training that I'm gonna be going through is all gonna be going through our tobacco funds, and, uh, that's all raised within house. So you have another dead canine on the north end that can be moved around the whole county, just with a, so you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, uh, Bruce, that was you, right?
Yes, Bruce, David second.
And, uh, was that Leon second, correct?
I thought it was David.
David, okay. All right, got, uh, motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, and number eight point four, uh, from, uh, Judge Brown up in J P five, uh, consider and approve the purchase of two enforcer, two tent meters from Amazon to be paid from J P Technology Fund, the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, I'm gonna ask that we take no action on this particular item. Uh, that needs to be paid out of the general fund and not the J P Technology Fund. So, uh, we can come back and, and get with Dwayne on that one and, uh, get that one taken care of.
Make a motion, take no action.
Motion, Bruce, second, Leon, take no action. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point five, uh, it's consider and approve updating Liberty County, uh, fraud policy. We just need to go back and, and, uh, and re-approve it. It's been a number of years since we've looked at it, and, uh, Catherine, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Did you see any reason why we should not, you know, with the current policy?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time. Not, not.
Okay. All right. Well, gentlemen, I'm just asking for a motion and a second, and we'll get a vote.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, Leon, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Uh,
likewise, nays. And that motion does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point six, from, uh, Sheriff Raider, and I believe, uh, Chief Knox is there this morning, considering approved installing a two hundred amp non-fuse disconnect on the exterior of the tower control building. Uh, it will feed the new disconnect with existing wiring, which has been stubbed up out of the ground with a tower feeder at a cost of twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents. The funds are available, and, uh, Chief, I think, is this the last of the Mohicans as far as getting this thing hooked up and running?
Uh, actually, no, sir, it's not. We, we've got, uh, some fiber that we need to run to the building. Uh, that quotes roughly around eight thousand dollars. Uh, we're, we're getting close, but those should be the last two items. The one today and the fiber to get it up and running. And then obviously, the equipment transfer, that's already under another contract to move it from the old tower to the new one.
Okay, so we'll have the, uh, this next piece will be in the next Commissioners Court meeting, correct?
Uh, hopefully so, yes, sir.
Okay, and just, uh, for the public, when do you anticipate flipping the switch on the new dispatch from the old dispatch, uh, at least the, the tower service, anyway?
Uh, April is, at the end of April, probably a safe bet, if everything moves along like it should. Maybe, possibly sooner.
Good. All right, we're getting there. Thank you, bud. Appreciate it. Okay, most courts.
Motion would approve.
Okay, I believe, I believe that was Bruce made the motion. Leon, could you make that second, please?
Oh, second.
Got a second from Leon. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, also, number seven, uh, from Nick Dennis, our I T guru. Consider approve request from I T for the Dayton Add X, networking repair and refresh due to flood damage. A sixty percent down payment of seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-two cents to be approved, be able to order equipment needed and finish the county portion of this project. Just pretty self-explanatory, Nick. Thank you.
Yeah, pretty much. So this was already passed and approved by the insurance, uh, company, so we just need to get the sixty percent down so we can order the equipment, so we can get that going and finish.
All this funding is coming from the insurance.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Hey, what's happening?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Chris. David.
Got a motion from Bruce, sound like a second from David. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Nick, don't sit down yet. Uh, number eight point eight. Uh, consider approve request from I T to relocate Robbie Thornton's Constable's office to the Commissioner Wilson's property due to flood damage. Set up network and security system for buildings. Uh, it's gonna be a six thousand and ninety-nine dollar and sixty cent full payment. So Robbie, you're gonna move, huh?
But this was, this is when they, uh, when they got displaced during the flood. We had to get them up and going as quickly as we could. We had to have cameras installed with comic spots for all the evidence and everything like that. So that was, A one was gracious enough to get out there and get all that equipment set up and ready to go for, uh, that location and those departments. So.
Also an insurance money?
Uh, I believe so, yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Motion, Leon, second from Bruce to approve.
Oh, we got to find it real quick. Sorry, sir.
Right, so they want the six thousand ninety-nine dollars up front?
No, this is, it's already been done. This was one of those, we gotta get them moving, uh, and get it completed. We were told to dispatch them immediately and get them moving.
He says.
Does this protect evidence and stuff?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That was to move all their evidence out of the, they had to send the comics boxes that were purchased or rented, I believe, and then the camera systems and security system upgrades to keep those protected, uh, during this temporary displacement. So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Everybody good? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Likewise, nays. That, uh, that item does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number nine, uh, from Ms. Chambers, our county clerk, consider and approve the designation of the use of the county clerk records management funds for the records management purposes documented and submitted by the Liberty County Clerk in the attached plan, including all purchases described therein, to be acquired by and through the regular purchase practices required by the county. Any purchases using records management funds beyond those outlined in the documentation will be submitted to the Commissioners Court for additional consideration and approval. That, Lee, that's pretty self-explanatory. Would you carry to elaborate some more?
Um, we had looked at this one before on a prior meeting. Bigger staff asked me to designate all of the record-keeping functions and uses within the office, so I tried to do that in as much detail as I possibly could. It's essentially a, uh, business as usual, and if any unusual business comes up, we will come up with Commissioners Court as required. But it's just to prove us, uh, having business as usual, um, with the way we've, we've been set up in the past with a lot of detail, a lot of detail.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Catherine, have you had the opportunity to look over this?
I did, Your Honor. I, I, I've analyzed plans, uh, just like Ms. Chambers said, very detailed and sufficient.
Mighty fine. All right, what's the court's pleasure?
Make a motion, approve the second.
And that was sounded like Bruce was second, the, the, uh, motion to approve. That was, was that you, Leon?
David, Chris Dexter.
Maybe.
Okay, David had the second? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Alrighty, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Lee, thank you. Appreciate you getting that clarified. Uh, number ten, from, uh, Ms. Aldi over in Permits and Inspections. Uh, I'm gonna ask that we take no action on this particular item and no discussion, uh, on this item. It's gonna be an information-only item, and, uh, the folks that were, uh, considering this, uh, proposal have decided to, uh, pull this from the agenda, and and with that being considered, I would ask that you take no action, and if so, need a motion and a second to do such.
Take no action.
Okay, that was Bruce. Leon, was that you on the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you. Uh, number eight eleven, Permits and Inspections from Ms. Aldi. And again, it's an information item. Attached in the packet is a L O M R dash F, letter of map revision based on film that has been reviewed by the City of Dayton for the River Ranch One Investments Limited pertaining to the River Ranch Phase Three Development for Transparency. These were brought to Commissioners Court prior to being signed. We don't have any purview over this, if y'all know that. I mean, I'm sure you do. The City of Dayton has all of the, uh, the rights, uh, to my understanding for, uh, approval. But this is for transparency purposes. So, uh, with that being said, what is the court's pleasure?
Make a motion, take no action. Second.
Got a motion from Leon, second from Bruce. Take no actions. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Uh,
likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number eight twelve, Permits and Inspections from Ms. Aldi. Consider and approve the acceptance of Santa Fe Section Ten roads into the county to your maintenance. L J A and Precinct Three staff inspected the roads on January the twenty-fourth. There was one minor deficiency and, uh, outfall ditch that can be addressed during the maintenance period. Okay, and, uh, pretty explanatory. Is there any, what's the court's pleasure?
David, you happy with this? Yeah. I make most would approve. Second.
Motion for Leon, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Jay. If you, if you need to vote on this one, otherwise we're.
I will.
Okay.
All right, uh, ayes well. Okay. Uh, so that is three ayes. One abstain.
One is there.
And one is absent, okay? In that case, the, uh, the item passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Number eight thirteen from Permits and Inspections, Ms. Aldi. Consider approve invoice number one two nine zero one point zero zero dash nine dated one two twenty-four in the amount of forty-eight hundred dollars for the Ames sanitary sewer improvements from, uh, Schaumburg Polk Incorporated using ARPA funding. And, uh, Dwayne, everything, everything good with you on this one?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve. All right.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fourteen from Ms. Aldi. Consider approve invoice number two zero two three two two five nine four dated nine thirteen twenty-three. That's got cobwebs on it, in the amount of four thousand dollars, and in, and invoice number two oh two three 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 seven five five dated twelve fourteen twenty-three in the amount of two thousand dollars for the City of Harden wastewater engineering services from L J A Engineering using ARPA funds. Dwayne, you have any problem with this one?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Okay.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve any further discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fifteen from, uh, Sheriff Raider, uh, and Chief Knox is there to help us walk through this one, considering approve the payment to Motorola Solutions thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars for video manager L Cloud software and hosting. Unlimited assigned annually per device for seventy-one in-car cameras March twenty twenty, let's see, March twenty-fifth, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three through March the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Chief, you there to kind of give us a little heads up on this one?
Yes, this is a, it's a yearly cost for, we upgraded the, uh, the body camera system as well. It went to an iCloud storage, so that also moved the in-car system over to the iCloud, which that's the direction that, uh, WatchGuard slash Motorola is going. And so it's, it's, uh, basically, it's a server storage fee for each device.
Are these dates correct? I mean, this is from last year to this year.
Are these, are these dates correct, I mean, this is from last year to this year, are we going to turn around and redo it again this year in March?
So we, we're trying to compile them all together, I don't have an exact answer, yes or no on that. There's some issues with their end on the billing. We know that we have seventy-one devices, their books show that they have, that we're being billed for more, but we know that we have seventy-one working devices. So. This, this bill will come again, it should be next year, the dates on that. It is. So that was supposedly for last year, we're still trying to figure that, get this hammered out. We, we owe, I know that we owe them this amount of money right here for last year. So I guess, we're trying to get the bill for this year.
My, my concern is we're paying, we're just not getting billed for services that already have been rendered. Did we get it?
We got a bill, but it wasn't correct.
I think this is, the software companies are bad about this, they don't, you know, buy something from them, and then they'll come back with additional charge, don't you think?
So you're all right about this?
Lean our hands are kind of tough at all this.
Make a motion, you have a.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve.
That second was, that second was David.
David, okay, thank you, brother, appreciate it. All right, second, motion Bruce, second from David. To approve, is there any further discussion? And I'll, I'll leave. Dwayne to crack the whip on these guys and see if they can get their bills set out in a more timely manner. Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion does carry, thank you gentlemen. Number eight sixteen, from Mr. C. Over the purchasing department, consider and approve soliciting bids. For addition to the training room at the gun range, now this is. This is for soliciting, okay? Not for approving anything yet, we just need to solicit these bids. Harold, are you there?
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Whitmire got three quotes for this work. Two of them were over fifty thousand, one was within a few hundred dollars less than fifty thousand, but. You know how it is, most of our projects, when they start on something, when they find something else, they have a change order. Well, if they did, y'all wouldn't be able to prove it if we went with that low bid. Because there's only a three hundred and thirty dollar difference or something from fifty thousand, so, so my recommendation is we just bid it out. Try to get some better prices, maybe.
Yeah. Makes sense. All righty.
You need better prices, everybody's expensive.
We probably five, five or six more people bid on it for sure, but, but I mean, you know, we'll see, it's well-nated as soon as we get it, yeah.
Hopefully so, yeah.
Have we secured funding for this? It's a simple question. Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion from Bruce, that was second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry, thank you gentlemen. Number eight seventeen, from Mr. C, consider and approve change order number one. In the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and eleven dollars for project twenty-three dash eleven. Construction of precinct one building to be paid from ARPA funds. Now, Harold, there's two. Buildings for precinct one, which one is this?
It's County Barn on seven oh nine.
Oh, okay, fourteen oh nine County Barn, okay.
Those, those are supply building, they start there.
Harold, you got anything to enlighten us on about this one?
Bruce, may I? Just, just changing orders, as, as any project goes along. Things change, we don't add things that we should be adding. This is to put the ADA tower in. And install a metal stairway up to the second floor to the top. And the decking from top for storage.
Good, okay, we sure don't need a ladder laying up there to be all the stuff up there, okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion from Leon.
Right.
Second, David. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry, thank you gentlemen. Number eight eighteen, from Mr. C, consider and approve new vendor for item seven point one. Cement stabilized sand to, two sack mixture, looks like from bid number twenty-four zero one road materials. Harold, you got anything you want to?
Yeah. Martin Marietta, that's the only bid they got within our road materials was the cement stabilized sand. For years, they would bid on every precinct except for precinct one. For something to happen way back, and I think we bought a little bit of this from them, and then they woke up one day and said, oh, y'all are on our bad list, we're not going to sell you that anymore, so. Both of them, they're making bitter, we just changed them up and. We don't buy that much of it anyway, to be honest.
Yeah.
Recovered, so make a motion to approve, second.
We're freaking talking.
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce, second from David. To approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry, thank you gentlemen. Number eight nineteen. From Mr. C, consider and approve soliciting bids for SS dash one, SS dash one H. CRS dash two and CRS dash two Durapatch blend by the number of gallons.
Okay, Cleveland NASCAR has bid on this for years, and has, and has actually been the approved bidder. In the past, probably several years ago, they would do it by tiers, like if you got over five thousand gallons, it'd be this price. Under, you know, there's two or three tiers in there, it would go up as you got less. But they didn't bid it that way this time, they just bid one price, and they had been selling it, and all of a sudden, they said. What if you're getting less than five thousand gallons, then we're going to charge you this extra money, more money, which is not what y'all approved. We saw it through the office, they're not paying, because that's not what y'all approved, so. I suggest we go back out for bids for that, and let them do the tier thing. And then it would make it all legal, and everything's good, but it'll, you know, it'll be several weeks before we'll get a bid on it.
Yeah, I have. Make a motion, we approve. Second. Motion from Leon, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry, and we don't have any executive session today, so.
Make a motion to adjourn, thank you.
You're, you're fast on that one, Dave, okay, got a motion from Bruce, I'm pretty sure that was a second from David to adjourn.